Exactly what James wants, so I stay by what I said in my motion and we second it to put it on its first reading.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I know you all don't want to hear it, but you're going to hear it. Same thing I said last year. The people in this town basically want to ban circuses, but they want to be part of that motion. That's the thing. They were infuriated that they were not going to be permitted to vote on this issue, to be a part of the action to say no. Of all the people who spoke here in the newspapers, on Geek Fest, any of our local area things, I did a count. Somebody had said something about how many are foreign against, well, I did a count. And it's not a whole lot of people considering we're 2,000-plus people, but that count came down overwhelmingly with these small numbers for the people saying no to the ban, 17 to 12, with the stipulation because they want to vote on it. This can go on a ballot next year, very little cost, and the people get to say, "We don't want the circus," rather than us sit here and say, "I don't care if you want it, we're telling you no." These people want to be part of the action to say no. Why is that so bad? Why is that so hard? Why are they being denied their rights to say, "I don't want a circus"? There's no rush. There's absolutely no rush. So this can be done. And I'll say again, page and a half of that to make it one paragraph. We, the citizens of Eureka Springs, choose to not allow traveling performance animals in our city limits. I'm done.
Mr. DeVito?
Well, I've been on this council for quite a few years, and I can state unequivocally that there has been as much response from the populace against circuses in this community as any other issue that's come before this table. If you discount people who are invested in the circus, the lady that came here who owned the circus, I received emails pro-circus, but they were from all over the country. They were not from the people who live in this community. The only people who addressed us at council were paid employees or the owner of the circus. There was not a single person who came forward to address this council who was not invested in the circus. Overwhelmingly, the people of this community have taken the time out of their schedules to come before us and address their concerns, and these are heartfelt concerns. This is not a casual subject. This goes to who these people are. They empathize for these animals that are being mistreated. They feel their pain. These are sensitive people, and we should recognize their concerns. I'm sorry, but your casual polling does not reflect the people of this community. It may reflect people who were, I say bought and paid for, expert testimony from a Texas A&amp;M.
Financially involved.
Excuse me, I still have the floor. From a person too close to the circus to be discreet in their comments. I'll state again, the people of this community have spoken against the circus. There has not been a single person in this community who resides in this community who has addressed this council or I've received an email from that was pro-circus.
Yes, ma'am.
What part of they are against the whole ban didn't you understand?
You got to speak to the chair.
Sorry. No, well, okay. What part didn't you understand? Okay? I was very clear. The people do not want it, but they want to be part of the action saying no. Do you get that? Now, when I did my little count, I did not count anybody who did not live in Eureka Springs. And when it came to Geek Fest, if they were regular posters and they lived in Oklahoma, I didn't count them. When it came to the emails, I didn't count them unless they lived in City Limits. City Limits said, "We don't want it, but we want to be the one to say no." Okay? Do we get this now?
All right. I think we need to start wrapping this up. We're repeating ourselves.
I'll let Joyce go first.
I do not want to wait a year and a half to settle this. I want to start this procedure tonight. I want this ordinance put on the first reading, and I don't care if we give it three readings and an emergency clause tonight. I don't want to wait a year and a half for a vote. The people that have emailed me have already spoken. I am absolutely convinced that I represent the majority of the people in this town when I say that I want to have this ordinance passed. I want it to be given a number, and I want it to put on its first reading now that we can get on with this.
James.
We're the representatives of the people in this community. We make the decisions based on the authority invested in us by the people who we serve. There is a mechanism to take this to the ballot. If the people so strongly feel if we pass this ordinance, they have the right to walk a petition to put it on the ballot. It's our responsibility to do the work of this community and not to put everything on the ballot. That's a very expensive way of dealing with the issues, and I, quite frankly, have no trepidation about stating my position and voting accordingly.
All right, Mickey.
Last comment. The people want to be part of it. Do not take their rights away. This is what they want to do. They want to be part of saying no.
All right. We've heard pro and con. We've got a motion and a second on the floor. Final, any further discussion? All right. Let's, all those in favor of putting a number on this ordinance and reading it for the first time, we'll do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
Present.
All right, next order of business is the 2,000 records discussion of destroying the 2,000 records. Got a motion to discuss.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
All right.
What are we doing?
We have, by state law, we're required to have somebody, and I'm not sure how the state law reads it, from somebody from the city council to witness. Well, you want to go ahead and explain exactly what we're doing, destroying public records from the year 2,000?
It is, in the state law, it's 1459-111, the procedure for destruction of records. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read a letter. It's pretty short.
Okay.
Mayor Robert Marion, city council members attached as a list of the 2007 city records which may by law be destroyed at this time with your permission. Don Matt disassembles the blinders, folders, and files, salvaging whatever materials are reusable and putting the rest into the city's recycling program. These boxes are in storage underneath the Public Works Department office. Your prompt action on our request to dispose of these records will be appreciated. And there's a list of records if you want to hear it, or I'll just hand the list out.
Let's just pass the list out. What we need, I think, is a witness to make sure that these records are destroyed, basically. And in the past, we've had a member of the city council.
Yes, that's, it's actually Don Matt and a council member.
Yes. So what we need is somebody to volunteer from the city council to witness the destruction of the records. And really, I did this once, and it wasn't that long, didn't take that much time, and I'm not sure.
When is the being?
We do this once a year, I imagine, because we destroy it every...
What, you just put it through a shredder?
Ten years. Go ahead, Ms. Adams Clerk.
Don goes through and takes everything apart and makes it so nothing correlates to anything else. And then he puts it in the recycling program and cycles the containers back for reuse here.
Do we have a date?
As soon as it's okayed, he'll begin the process, and that will actually allow, when 2007 goes out of Public Works, what's jamming in the hallway downstairs can get moved to Public Works.
So basically, you just need a volunteer?
Yes.
Not volunteer.
Oh, that's not where mine, mine's not a volunteer, mine's a question.
Okay.
Somebody tell me what the recycle program is for these records. It's been said, it's recycled. Is recycled shredded and then recycled? Is recycled whole pages even though they're broke apart and not together? Is there the potential that people's names and money is on there? Because one page could be just as lethal as a whole trash bag full if it had the wrong information on it. So I just needed a little more understanding of recycle, please.
Madam Clerk.
They are not shredded.
Okay.
And in-house, you try to, anything that is potentially volatile in that respect, to shred it in-house. But what he brings out there is just physically taken apart.
Physically taken apart is, because look at some of the stuff on here, payroll time cards and check statements, accounts payable, invoice checks. I'm just trying to figure out what recycle means, and is it really securing the information? That's, and I just don't understand that, so maybe. But anyway, if you've done it before and you're comfortable, that's great. I just...
I'm curious why it wouldn't be shredded.
I don't have the answer to that.
We can go ahead.
Historically, when we were trying to eliminate hospital records and things, it became a huge issue. And at one time, we had recycling companies that came and got it, and pieces got out, and it became a major disaster. And it was, it wasn't the whole chart, it was pieces of the chart, like a path report or something, and it was just one piece of paper, and it became very damaging. And that's my only point.
And to be honest with you, I'm not, I don't remember. I know this is something that comes up every year. Y'all have done this the last four years that you were on council, two years. When I was on council, we did it. I was under the impression that they were destroyed also instead of recycled. So I'm not sure exactly what Don Matt does to destroy them, because I absolutely agree if there's anything to deal with personnel issues that should have been shredded and destroyed to begin with. Yes, ma'am.
Jim, can we make an ordinance law, whatever it would be, to say, you know, in the future, whatever, we will shred?
Next year.
Do we have to, or can we just tell our personnel, "Please shred"? What would be a legal remedication in this regard?
Well, council can certainly pass an ordinance if it wishes to, that future documents or all documents from that point forward would be shredded or otherwise destroyed in a manner that they are unusable. Or actually, in this instance, I think that the mayor's office, since it's done through Don Matt, could direct that he shred it. Now, you may want to look into how much paper you're really talking about and how many of these documents really contain anything, but there do appear some records on there. I kind of agree with Mr. Mitchell that some of those could have some pretty sensitive information on one page.
Well, do we have to direct the mayor to direct?
Let me interject here. Why don't we, go ahead, and this isn't something that's an emergency that has to be done tonight. Let me go ahead, if we'll go ahead and have a table on this, and let me discuss this with Don Matt and find out the exact procedures of what's happening.
One point, you might look into that mobile shredding service and the cost of that.
Yeah.
Do we have a shredder? We don't have a shredder?
Yeah.
Not for this volume.
I was going to say, like, mine at home?
Yeah, well, we're talking about a year of city records.
I do know the city of Bentonville has a shredder that they let the local citizens come by once a month and shred.
I'm sure they do.
And so, I mean, so it's something to think about if we want to get a bigger one, you know?
All right. Can I get a motion to defer this to the next council meeting?
Motion to defer to the next council meeting.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, sing aye?
Aye.
All right, sub move. All right, the other, actually, I may have jumped over in the agenda, but next is the resolution for Senate Bill 202. Motion to discuss.
Sub moved.
No exceptions.
James, you want to?
I passed out some information from the Democrat Gazette about Hester's bill 202, which passed the state senate today, and it'll go to the House this week, and it could get out of the House this week, and it has an emergency clause attached to it and could even become law by the end of the week, based on the fact that it's been reported that the state legislature is ahead of schedule and will adjourn earlier than expected this year. So a couple of things. Mark Hayes, the chief legal counsel for the Arkansas Municipal League, has taken an official stance, he hasn't taken an official stance, but as a lawyer, he has some issues with the language in the bill. For instance, the state's constitution, home rule clause, gives cities and counties the right to make ordinances and rules not specifically in conflict with the state law. So the state is trying to cast this wide net. They're not specifically enumerating what they do not want the cities to do. They're just basically throwing out this large net and trying to preclude us as a city from passing any laws protecting our citizens. And the article goes on to state that 18 states and nearly 300 municipalities already have prohibiting discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. And as Mr. Ritchie stated, it's obvious what they're trying to preclude with this bill. You also have Mark Stotler, the president of the municipal league, who's also the mayor of Little Rock, who's concerned about the language of the bill, noting if it passed, the legislation could affect whether cities could give contract bidding preferences to Arkansas businesses as well as other unintended consequences. So I'm assuming that in the haste that Hester has set upon to get this passed, to preclude these cities from passing any additional ordinances, and it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that this was directed specifically to Fayetteville, because they are in the process of reconsidering the anti-discrimination ordinance and trying to bring it up for a vote. So the resolution before you basically says that we are not in favor of Resolution 202 because it infringes upon the right of home rule. The authority of law and governance starts with the city. The city came first. There was no state, there was no said federal government. There was the city, and the city empowered their representatives to pass laws in their cities. So that's the basis from which law emanates from, and the state is trying to prohibit our ability to pass laws to protect our citizens. So, you know, just like our resolution on fluoride, this is not going to probably change the outcome, but it will put us on record as opposing House Bill 202, Senate Bill 202.
Yes, Mr. Mitchell.
100% agreement in what Alderman DeVito said, but a question. When we do a resolution like this and we pass it and we stick it in the books and it makes the newspaper and all, does this resolution go anywhere that might affect anybody at the legislature and/or Brian King or anybody else like that, or does it just kind of sit on the books?
It depends. It basically sits on the books, but we can, you know, by direction of the council, fax it down to our local representatives.
Thank you.
Any other question, Mr. DeVito?
I don't have a question, but I'll make a motion to give this resolution a number and pass it upon reading.
Second.
All those in favor? Any other comments? I guess we need a roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
The resolution number will be 654, a resolution declaring opposition to Senate Bill 202, whereas on February 5, 2015, the city, county, and local affairs committee of the Arkansas Senate gave a due-pass recommendation to Senate Bill 202, which would prohibit any county, municipality, or other political subdivision of the state from adopting or enforcing any ordinance, resolution, rule, or policy that creates a protected classification or prohibits discrimination on a basis not contained in state law. And whereas the city council, the city of Eureka Springs believes that such legislation is an unwarranted intrusion into the ability of any political subdivision of the state to define and protect its residences and visitors, whereas the city council believes that protections against discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender expression, and gender identity needs to be extended to individuals, and that Senate Bill 202 would prevent the city from pursuing that goal for its residents and visitors. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city of Eureka Springs is opposed to Senate Bill 202 and urges legislators in both houses to vote nay.
All right.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Do we need a motion to fax it, or is, can we just leave that to your discretion?
You can do that. I'm going to fax it off to Senator King and Representative Ballinger, if I can find their fax numbers, but I'm sure they have one in the House.
That'll be fine. Thank you.
Well, I have a question. What's the difference between our fluoride resolution where we all signed it and this one where only you signed it? I would really like to be able to sign this.
I guess it was just the way that it was presented. I don't see any reason why we can't put your names on it. And, Madam Clerk?
When resolutions and ordinances are passed, at the bottom, the vote count and names are entered on the resolution, so the final document will have the names of the people.
But we had to come in and sign the fluoride letter.
Well, what was the difference? That wasn't the resolution.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Well, it was, but it was different.
Yes, we may have signed the letter, but the vote on the resolution, all your names will be at the bottom.
I'm just saying, I would like to sign this, and I don't understand why.
It's kind of time-sensitive. That's our problem.
I think that signing it was something we just routinely, since I've been, have not really done, we've always allowed it to go, as the clerk said. Why we deviated that time, I don't have a clue.
Okay.
Nope, the attorney does.
What you signed was actually the letter. The resolution itself is the document that authorized the letter.
Okay, now, thank you.
And that is signed by the clerk and the mayor.
Okay.
And it does record the vote, Cal.
You know, I have a question about this, about this bill. If it passes, if a person goes into a restaurant and the person in the restaurant...
Ms. Elder, we're really kind of past that.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Good question for the next one.
It's coming up again on the next...
Yeah, and you're going to be able to discuss that on this next...
Sorry about that. Next topic.
All right. Motion to discuss ordinance, two minutes, civil rights, your experience code?
Second.
All right. Who wants to lead off? James?
We have before us an ordinance dealing with anti-discrimination, and I apologize for the haste in which we will have to pass this ordinance, because as you understand, time is of the essence. When Senate Bill 202 goes into effect, it will basically preclude us as a council from passing any ordinance protecting gay, lesbian, transgendered people in our community. I can't think of anything more important we're going to do this year as a council than to protect a significant portion of our population from discrimination. While it may not be out in the public realm that people are being discriminated against, if people understand there is no law to protect them in our community, then they're not going to come forward with their complaints about discrimination. We don't know everything that goes on in our community. We don't know about people who are denied housing, denied jobs, denied access to services. It could exist here. It could exist in any community. It's the reason why Fayetteville tried to pass their ordinance. It's a very important piece of legislation to protect people in our community. It's a pretty simple ordinance. It's one page. There is attachments on how it will be administered. The mayor will be the chief administrator. He will try to resolve the issues first through, what's that called?
Mediation.
Mediation, thank you. And if that doesn't work, then it will go through the legal aspects outlined here. And at the end of the page, you have a minimum penalty of $100, a fine of not less than $100. But there is a way of resolving these issues without having to go to a court of law. But in a community as such as Eureka Springs, we passed the first domestic partnership resolution in the state. We married the first same-sex couples in the state. Yet as a community, we don't have laws to protect those people. So I feel that it's imperative of us to pass this in three readings. There's an emergency clause attached that will put it into effect with the mayor's signature. And I can't restate enough how important this is because this is a civil rights issue. Contrary to what our esteemed state legislatures may think, you know, this is wholly within our rights as a city to protect our own people from discrimination. If the state's not going to do it, we have to do it because the laws that are not enumerated in state or federal law are left up to us to decide. Aside from the merits of this ordinance, the state is trying to take that away, and I won't go into that because thankfully we just passed the resolution on that one.
David?
100% in agreement with what Alderman DeVito said. Question for our city attorney. Time is of the essence, and I think that was his ultimate thing because of the Senate. If they do an emergency clause and the governor signs it real quick, but if we pass this tonight, three readings, and we pass it and we emergency clause it, which makes it in place then, we've done it ahead of the legislature, so therefore we'll be under the wire and it will be not be able to be rescinded?
Not from my reading of the way the Senate bill is constructed. I don't know what the final language will be of the Senate bill if it's passed and becomes law, but the current language, as I understand it from the various news accounts and the various people, and even our own resolution that we just passed, it says...
and the various people, and even our own resolution that we just passed, it says from passing or enforcing. And that would prevent us from enforcing our ordinance against anyone, even if we passed it ahead of it.
I'd like to continue that. That's what I wanted to know, but I still feel comfortable in reading it and passing it and letting the cards fall where they may, because I have this fundamental problem with them discriminating under the cloak of whatever drives them to do this, religious or homophobia or whatever they want to call it and whatever they want to do. I have a, I have a problem with that, and I still think that we should go ahead and read it and pass it, and let's just find out what happens.
Well, if I may. This becomes a very complicated point of law, and this is one of the things I think that Mark Hayes hinted at with some of his comments. If they pass this, and the city passes its own ordinance that gives a right, you potentially open the city up and or the state, if the state passes theirs and we don't have one, to violating someone's constitutional rights under a 1983 action. 1983 actions under the federal law are actionable against the city, and we are not toward immune for those, nor is the state toward immune for those. And it may be better to let this play out on a much larger scale than have us be the test case when the city comes under fire by the state.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Because a toward immune or a 1983 action, although the amount of money that may be assigned for the loss of right under color of law may only be a dollar or two, it can include millions of legal fees.
Okay, let me, one last thing, let me finish. Okay, so you're basically trying to advise us to not come up with an ordinance that covers discrimination outside of the city employees and the city as an entity, and overlays businesses or anybody that's doing business within our city limits, is what you're kind of alluding to?
I'm more telling you that if you put a criminal, which a fine is a criminal penalty on something, if you put a fine on somebody for violating someone else's constitutional rights and it becomes aware that they're not violating, but you're violating someone else's by the virtue of your law.
So if we take that fine off, will that make it better?
I'm not sure. I mean, this is something I really think caution and slow is better. And I understand very much that the state may pass this in a matter of days or even hours.
So, okay.
But if we violate someone else's rights, you could say, and Mr. Ritchie, when he spoke a little while ago to you, he said, well, if I, if I go to a restaurant and they turn me away, he's, his rights, you're saying are violated. But a court could say that if we punish the one that turns them away, we're violating the restaurant's rights, potentially.
I got that. So let me ask this next question then. In lieu of that, should, should that come to be, and maybe we choose to watch and see where it plays out, the city as an entity with the city employees and the governance there, as any company, has the right to develop an anti-discrimination policy that applies to the city and the city employees? Companies have them, Fortune 500 companies all over have them and various municipalities. So we could easily, if worse come to worse, come back and say, then the city will have an anti-discrimination that'll include sexual preference, gender identity, et cetera?
And I think the city can probably do that within its own...
Just as...
Within its own policy management.
Just in case down here, I still, this still irks me, but...
I mean, this is a very, very sticky mess.
Last question to James. James, where did this come from? Did they reference? This obviously is a very good ordinance that you're talking about here.
Lamont crafted this based on the Fayetteville ordinance.
So if the wording that got Fayetteville a little bit of trouble with the chamber's not in here, do you hear that?
Well, that's, go ahead, James, answer the, see if you can answer the question first. Sorry, Mickey.
That's okay.
The chamber took the position in Fayetteville for some of the reasons that the city attorney mentioned, and who's the mayor? Who's the mayor of Fayetteville? Well, anyway, the mayor of Fayetteville pointed out that both Walmart and the University of Arkansas have non-discrimination policies in place. And, you know, there's always going to be this fear thrown up that, oh, it's going to cause businesses to fail or something. Well, you know, we try to do the best we can in crafting these laws and putting them out into the real world and find out what really happens. I can't really buy a hundred percent that somehow an ordinance that, that gives civil rights to the last group of people in the United States, there's nobody else. This is the last group of people that have been denied civil rights. And it's our responsibility as a city to give them their due. Personally, from what I hear from Mark Hayes and the president of the municipal league, they'll be standing behind us a hundred percent, because this is a flawed law. This is a flawed law that will be challenged in a court. It's going to be us. We could be the test case. But if we don't pass this tonight, and we try to pass it after this law goes into effect, as you see with the marriage amendment and what's trying to happen with same-sex marriages in Arkansas, it could go on for years. I would be much more comfortable with passing a law in this city protecting our citizens from discrimination and take the chances against the state who is passing an unconstitutional law.
Okay, that's pretty much what I'm saying. I am sick and tired of talking to all of our senators and representatives, not our two, but senators and representatives. And discrimination is constitutionally illegal, wrong, however you want to word it. And trying to get them to understand they have no right in our business, they have no right telling me, a Eurican, what our city can do. We have proved this to them time and time again. Remember when the state banned Sunday booze? What did Eureka do? Held a special election and said, and we did it. We do this all the time. I personally would love to be the test. Either us suing them for an illegal law or them coming after us for having passed this tonight and enforcing the rights of everyone. And if the state is stupid enough and dumb enough to come down on us, Eureka Springs, because they should know better, we'll kick their butts for them, because this is illegal, it's wrong, it's unfair, it's morally disgusting. So I think, and we'll second and call the question or anything else, let's get this read, do the emergency have a law right now, and I dare the state to do anything. That's my feeling.
George?
Yeah, I think what we're doing here is, and I agree with you, I'm on your side, and maybe I'm still angry about the way the circus vote went, so I'm ready to take a stand on something. But what we're, what we're taking a chance on is that the state is not going to take us to court and sue us over passing a non-discrimination law. I think, I mean, that, that's what it comes down to. If we do this, are they going to take us to court, is, as I understand it? And the nationwide publicity, I, we wouldn't have it in trouble with money. We would have every gay group in the United States donating to our legal fund. So I'm, I'm in favor of, yeah, let's get this done, let's do it tonight.
Mr. Weaver?
I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding. I'm not saying the state's going to sue you. This very well could come as a right-wing conservative.
That's even better.
That's where, that's where it's more likely to come out.
Hey, I'm the poster child for that. I'm that serious. I'm a tricky ass for that.
Number two thing that I would like to point out to you too, is if you pass it tonight, make sure the wording is exactly what you want, because if it's not, and they pass the bill, the bill says no new ordinances. So there won't be any amending it, there won't be any changing it.
If you advise we should drop the fee thing, that's not a problem.
Well, I don't know that the fee thing is the only problem with it, but the fee, the fee thing could be very much taking away someone's rights.
Well, we have a second and third reading, we'll catch it.
No.
Yeah, we do.
Tonight, we're passing tonight with an emergency clause.
We'll just pay attention to that.
Three readings.
So we have a couple.
Yeah, we'll read it if we find an issue on reading it, we can amend whatever we might take exception to.
You know, this is a well-crafted ordinance, and if the law wrote it, I'll go with it.
With the mayor's pleasure. You know, this went through Fayetteville. I mean, you know, that gets, no offense, I mean, there was a lot of people involved in this, and it was debated for quite a while, and they felt it to be a very sound ordinance. So I feel comfortable in that. So I'll make the motion to give this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
All right, we have a motion and a second to put this on, give it a number and place it on first reading. Have any further comments? All right.
If reading it, just about two things.
And a roll call vote?
Yes, read it off.
If you want it.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, any votes? Okay.
The ordinance number will be 2223. An ordinance to amend the Eureka Springs Code by enacting Chapter 7.65 Civil Rights Administration to protect the civil rights of Eureka Springs residents and visitors. Whereas the City of Eureka Springs seeks to protect and safeguard the right and opportunity of all persons to be free from unfair discrimination based on real or perceived race, ethnicity, national origin, age, gender, gender identity, gender expression, familial status, marital status, socioeconomic background, religion, sexual orientation, disability, and veteran status, and whereas the City of Eureka Springs seeks to promote the public health and welfare of all persons who live or work in the City of Eureka Springs, and to ensure that all persons within the city have equal access to employment, housing, and public accommodations. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, enacts Chapter 7.65 Civil Rights Administration as shown on Exhibit A attached here too. Section 2, that all ordinances or resolutions and parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. In the event any one or more provisions contained in this ordinance shall for any reason be held by a court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, illegal, or unenforceable in any respect. Such invalidity, illegality, or unenforceability shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance, and this ordinance shall be construed as if such invalid, illegal, or unenforceable provision or provisions had never been contained herein. Exhibit A, Chapter 7.65 Civil Rights Administration. 7.65.01, purpose. The purpose of this chapter is to protect and safeguard the right and opportunity of all persons to be free from discrimination based on real or perceived race, ethnicity, national origin, age, gender, gender identity, gender expression, familial status, marital status, socioeconomic background, religion, sexual orientation, disability, and veteran status. This chapter's purpose is also to promote the public health and welfare of all persons who live or work in the City of Eureka Springs, and to ensure that all persons within the city have equal access to employment, housing, and public accommodations. 7.65.02, definitions. A, business establishment, means any entity, however organized, which furnishes goods, services, or accommodations to the general public. An otherwise qualifying establishment which has membership requirements is considered to furnish services to the general public if its membership requirements consist only of payment of fees or consist only of requirements under which a substantial portion of the residents of the city could qualify. Being the civil rights administrator means the mayor, who is authorized to receive, investigate, and conciliate complaints brought about, brought under this chapter. C, disability or disabled means, with respect to an individual, a physical or mental impairment, a record of such impairment, or being perceived or regarded as having such impairment. For purposes of this chapter, discrimination on the basis of disability means that no covered entity shall discriminate against a qualified individual with a disability because of that individual's disability. The term qualified individual with a disability shall mean an individual with a disability who, with or without reasonable accommodation, can perform the essential function of the employment position that the individual holds or desires. D, discriminate, discrimination, or discriminatory, means any act, policy, or practice that has the effect of subjecting any person to deferential treatment as a result of that person's real or perceived race, ethnicity, national origin, age, if 18 years or older, gender, gender identity, gender expression, familial status, marital status, socioeconomic background...